Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners April ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Regular meeting. We're going to open up with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Cynthia Reed Ward, followed with the invocation by Truman Tinsley the third. Please join us. Most gracious heavenly father, we're here today to ask for your guidance and blessings in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and justice, fair and just to the best interest of everyone. Help us overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Thank you. So we have a motion approved, the agenda is presented. Come on, Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Under presentations and delegations. Our first item is to recognize Lamar Stone, equipment operator, street division of Public Works, as the March twenty twenty-four strongest link in the chain award recipient. Director of Public Works, Marissa Eller will address. Welcome.
Let me get it. Okay. We nominated Lamar because since he came to the street department, he'd shown unimaginable improvements that none of us knew were possible. He is proof that anybody can learn anything if they put their mind to it. Uh, he's one of our main go-to guys. His determination seen by everybody, employees and citizens alike. Uh, on March twenty-ninth, Lamar was working behind historic City Hall. He found a firearm laying on the ground. He immediately notified his supervisor and called the police and remained there so no one touched it or came in there until the officer arrived to remove it. He demonstrates true integrity and loyalty to the community and we're very proud to have him and glad he's on our team.
Lamar, if you could please introduce your family that are here. I told her she didn't have to sing. We're so glad to have you today. And Lamar, you've been with us about two years now? Longer than that? So Lamar is the uh, he has the ability to take initiative. You see him in downtown always working and going out of his way. You'll see a piece of trash blowing down the alley. He'll chase after it. He's here on the weekends dumping the dumpsters and the trash and just, um, it is a joy to watch you perform and work and just have a positive attitude and we're blessed to have him because like you working for the city. God bless you and thank you for your service. And thank y'all for nominating him. Wonderful. Thank y'all. All right, we're about to do a couple of proclamations. I'm coming up front. So item two is a presentation of a proclamation declaring April eighth, two thousand twenty-four to be Griffin lineman appreciation day in the month of April, two thousand twenty-four as national and state lineman appreciation month. Election Department General Freeman will be here to receive along with our lineman. So. Good evening, folks. How are y'all doing today? Knock on wood. It's been a pretty quiet first quarter. Appreciate all you. So today proclamation Griffin lineman appreciation day. Whereas the city of Griffin, the Griffin power recognize the efforts of linemen in keeping the power on regardless of the conditions and protecting public safety. And whereas a lineman is a tradesman who works hard to construct and maintain energy infrastructure and the profession of lineman is steeped in a personal, family and professional tradition of these true public servants. And whereas linemen are often first responders during storms and other catastrophic events, working to make the scene safe for other public safety heroes. They work every day in a potentially hazardous condition, often in extreme, extreme weather. Twenty-four hours a day, three hundred sixty-five days a year, keep the power flowing for the rest of us. And whereas linemen work in dangerous situations with thousands of volts of electricity, high top power lines away from their own families to construct and maintain the energy infrastructure for the city, this state can often has backed up to out-of-state locations in need. And whereas linemen put their lives on the line literally every day with little fanfare or recognition from the community regarding the inherent danger of their work. So since April eighteenth, two thousand twelve, chosen in memory of Cliff Bosch, who was a celebrated lineman who passed away on April eighteenth, nineteen ninety-two. Georgia lineman appreciation day has been commended, commemorated as a day to honor all those who are unselfishly served on a daily basis. And whereas multiple organizations throughout the state, including Georgia EMCs, electric cities of Georgia, MEAG, and the Georgia Power, are coming together to ensure that linemen in Georgia are recognized for their effective and dedicated service to the citizens of the state. And whereas in recognition of the state, Georgia's designation as April eighth, two thousand twenty-four is Georgia lineman appreciation day in the month of April, two thousand twenty-four, is national and state lineman appreciation month is the most fitting and proper that the linemen of Griffin power be recognized for their effective, steadfast, and dedicated service to all the citizens of the city of Griffin, Georgia. Now therefore be resolved, City of Griffin Board of Commissioner does hereby proclaim April eighth, two thousand twenty-four as Griffin lineman appreciation day in April, two thousand twenty-four, as Griffin lineman appreciation month in the city of Griffin, Georgia, and urge all citizens to pause to reflect on their contributions and to thank me linemen you see, whether you see them working near your home, at a local restaurant, church, or school event, for their commitment and dedication to keeping the power upon for everyone. We do hereby declare a copy of this proclamation to be spread upon minutes of the board reflecting that I have here in pause and seal the city of Griffin to be affixed on this eighth day of April, the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-four. Signed, Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor and Jessica O'Connor, City Mayor. But thank you all for what you do for the last. We very appreciate it. And so we're going to spoke through.
I just want to say a huge thank you to all of you. Y'all are truly a joy to work with every day. It's never a dull moment. Lots of laughter. I really do appreciate you guys. Um, y'all come in, work hard every day with a good attitude, smile on your face. You can tell that you love your job. Um, and that makes my job that much easier because I never have to worry about you guys. Like y'all are out there just pumping it every single day. And I really, really appreciate that. Um. And to you guys, I would like y'all to know that we are getting very close to being fully staffed and we haven't been that way in a very long time, but we are knocking on that door. And um, I'm proud to say that the majority of our staff are homegrown. They are, they are here. They've been here. They've been raised up through this and they've stuck with it. And um, I'm just, I'm very proud of them because that's what we want. We want them to be, you know, come through the apprentice program and go through that whole thing and then become our lineman and stay in our town. And that's pretty much what we have. So we've had recently, we've moved two up from apprentice to the lineman position. We've hired two new apprentices and um, we're very, very close to being fully staffed. So these guys are, are awesome. So thank y'all very much.
So our next presentation is our proclamation for Georgia Cities Weeks, and I believe we have city ambassadors. So proclamation for Georgia Cities Week soaring to new heights, April twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas this year's theme of Georgia Cities Weeks, soaring to new heights is sponsored by the Georgia Municipal Association, GMA, to showcase and celebrate cities and the many services they provide. Georgia Cities Weeks in part of the ongoing effort to raise public awareness of how city government works, educate citizens on how city services impact. And whereas, as with many cities across Georgia, Griffin will celebrate Georgia Cities Weeks in a myriad of ways, focusing each day on a different aspect of what makes Griffin great. Cities provide the service and the infrastructure to help businesses grow and set the stage for some events where families and individuals can gather as a community. Georgia Cities Weeks will begin on Sunday, April twenty-one, two thousand twenty-four at the Griffin Spalding Airport with a food truck fly-in. The event will be from eleven AM to three PM and attendings will gather to enjoy delicious food while taking the sights of many local aircraft. On Monday, April twenty-second, the city will host play Griffin golf course day. Participants will play the beautiful city course and receive a free hot dog. On Tuesday, April twenty-third, there will be an opportunity to participate in the guided walking tour of the stor- historic Oak Hill Cemetery at ten AM. On Thursday, April twenty-fifth, participants can enjoy picnic at the park with our own city manager, Jessica O'Connor. This will be a lunch and learn featuring the future Griffin Spalding Airport development. On Friday, April twenty-sixth, city church and the Griffin Police Department will host Moving in the Park. The event will be held in the downtown Griffin in the field behind historic City Hall beginning at seven PM. On Thursday, on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, the city will offer a final event of Georgia Cities Week, Saturday at the Archives at one forty-three North Hill Street from ten AM to four PM. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners proclaim April twenty-one through twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-four as Georgia City Weeks and the city of Griffin encourage all citizens, elected officials, and employees to participate in to learn more about their city and how it operates as this week has been set aside to recognize the many services of the city of Griffin provides in its contributions to a better quality of life in Georgia. The Board of Commissioners hereby declare that a copy of this proclamation is spread upon minutes of proceedings of the board reflecting that the seal of the city of Griffin is affixed on this, the ninth day of April, in the year of our Lord, two thousand twenty-four. Signed, Douglas S. Holberg, Mayor and Jessica O'Connor, City. Congratulations. And who is our exposed person? So would you like to spread some word?
Thank you all so much. We're so excited about Georgia Cities Week this year. Um, it actually soaring to new heights is the theme which uh, we picked off the our week with the future plan for the past few years. So it fits perfectly this year. And we're also excited to highlight the cemetery and the archives, which we've not been able to um, recently. So we're super excited. Thank you all very much.
All right, item four on the presentation delegation and received comments, financial reports from February twenty twenty-four on its director, Deborah Manning. Gilbert will address. Welcome, Esthebra.
Good evening. I'm reviewing February financials tonight. Um, that is sixty-six percent into the fiscal year. Total operating revenue is ninety-three point four million. That's sixty-nine percent of our projections. Total operating expenses eighty point eight million, which is forty-nine point six percent of our projections. Uh, local option sales tax collected is three million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars, which is seventy-one and a half percent of our projections. Peace loss collected is three million, fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars, which is eighty-two percent of our projection. Current year property taxes collected is four million, nine hundred eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars, and that is ninety-five point seven of our.
Is there more to any question? Great. Thank you, Esthebra. All right, moving into citizen comments. At this time, the mayor will support your comments from the audience. Comments related to specific agenda items not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to concern within jurisdiction of the city. Mission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinion. Except to the citizens' comment policy adopted on February third, twenty twenty-four. Because reports, the public need, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which is strictly followed in court. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters domain to city business and may infer speakers of the city manager, other staff, or residents. If that being said, is there anybody on my left side like to come before the board? Welcome, Dr. Jones.
Dr. Hishonda Jones. Um, I don't give my address, but I'm here to speak on behalf of Mr. Joe Ward Jr., the owner of Hibachi Joe's about the licensing for the food trucks. Licensing for food trucks should be fair and reasonable. Our food trucks are a vibrant part of our communities, offering diverse culinary experiences and contributing to our local economy. However, we often face unique challenges compared to traditional brick and mortar restaurants. As a result, fair and reasonable license licensing is crucial. Food trucks are often started by entrepreneurs like myself with limited resources. Fair and reasonable licensing fees ensure that we have a chance to enter the market without being burdened by exorbitant costs. This fosters innovation and diversity in the culinary landscape, allowing for new and exciting food concepts to emerge. Our food trucks contribute significantly to our local economy, generating revenue not only for themselves, but also for surrounding businesses. By keeping licensing fees reasonable, the city of Griffin can stimulate economic activity in the areas where they operate. We often cater to underserved areas or provide affordable dining options in areas where traditional restaurants may be scarce. Fair licensing practices ensure that these food trucks can continue to serve the community without being priced out of operation, thus improving food accessibility for residents. Reasonable licensing requirements should still uphold necessary health and safety standards to protect consumers. However, when licensing fees are excessively high, some food truck operators may be tempted to operate without proper permits, potentially compromising food safety. Fair fees make it easier for operators to comply with regulations, ensuring that food trucks maintain high standards of hygiene and safety. We often showcase a wide range of culinary traditions and cultural influences. Fair licensing practice enable a diverse array of food truck operator to participate in the market, allowing for the celebration and exchange of different cultural foods and experiences within a community. We contribute to the vibrancy and character of our city's culinary scene. By keeping licensing fees reasonable, the city of Griffin can help to sustain this vibrancy, attracting tourists and residents alike to explore the unique flavors offered by our food trucks. Fair and reasonable licensing for our food trucks is essential for fostering entrepreneurship, supporting our local economy, improving food accessibility, ensuring compliance with safety standards, promoting cultural exchange, and maintaining a vibrant food scene. By adopting sensible licensing practices, the city of Griffin can help nurture the growth of this valuable sector of our food industry. And they did want me to comment that uh, it's almost a slap in the face to them to have you guys doing something like a food truck fly-in, but the compromise that has been offered for the licensing fee is not what they would like to see. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on my left like to come before the board? Anybody on my right? Thank you. We have the consent agenda, items five through ten. Do we have a motion of three consent agents? Commissioner Murray with a motion, second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor of the consent agenda, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Moving into the regular agenda, item eleven is considered minutes of the Griffin Board of Commissioners workshop in regular meeting on March twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four. Commissioner Murray is absent for both meetings. Do we have a motion approved? Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Kendley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Six, you're one, Commissioner Murray abstaining. Item twelve is consider a contract with North Georgia Concrete Inc. with a total amount of eight hundred thirteen thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and eighty-one cents for place two bridges located in regress, regress of the Griffin golf course. Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, June. Item thirteen is considered a task order from the master service agreement from the C. Griffin Paragon Consulting Group in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred twenty dollars for the survey services, construction plan, bid administration, construction management for the Hamilton Boulevard realignment at the intersection of East College Street and Beatty Avenue. And what, Commissioner Murray with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item fourteen is considered master service and purchasing agreement in the end of with accident enterprises ink sole short for the equipment purchase, installation, setup, training, and maintenance of body cameras, E. R. camera, and tasers for the total contract cost of one billion, five hundred seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-three dollars and seventy cents per period of five. Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Tinsley. And a question, is that, is that total price spread out over five years? Okay, I see. Okay. And that's the regular budget item. Please a motion, Commissioner Ward, second by Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, Europe. Item fifteen is consider accepting the recycling waste diversion grant from the Georgia Environmental Protection Division in the amount of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a purpose of purchasing a trailer utilized at the Griffin Regional Recycling Center. Commissioner Murray with a motion. Say goodbye, Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, zero. Item sixteen is considered the purchase of a Caterpillar cat, D five, D here. Thank you, Matt. In the amount of four hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars by lease supplement, month, period, city map, for these agreements with the GMA and amendment budget reporting. Commissioner Murray with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Seven, June. Item seventeen is a regular issue. Nine by town. Request the approval of eleven slightly to create Griffin Spalding County Area Regional Airport Authority by recognizing the importance of a regional agency airport to build in city Griffin Spalding County with potential regional impact on the counties of Spalding, but Pike, Lamar, and both counties. A motion by Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Tinsley, second by Commissioner Murray. And then four. Yes.
Um. The end of um. Revolution where it says it will be um. The airport authority. And, and, and it. City of Griffin's small county, but kind of, kind of, mark county, Maro- Maro County. Um. The authority will be made up from members from each of these counties.
Yes.
Okay. Can you kind of explain to me why that happened that way?
Because for it to be in an economic development project for the state, it cannot be only Spalding County. Yes. They do not have to participate to make the quorum. Um, but they all agreed that they would have their names on the actual authority, whether or not they participate is moot. Um, because we can still do it through our local um, delegation that we sort of have now on the airport authority.
Um, what is, what is? They're being on the authority. They would have the ability to do what? Use the airport flying? What, what, what is?
Just like they would now. So they're just sort of there in name. It really wouldn't change how they can operate from the airport.
Where we be uh, as an authority, would say you make it in practice use when they use the airport?
Only in user fees, just as they would now. They're not going to split any of the funding because they're not part of the MOA with the FAA or GDOT. That's just us in the county.
So if they, if they, if they're flying in the airport, they will, they will be paid.
They'll have, yes, and they would have user fees for gas or for hangar rentals or for other, where's Mr. Mole? There he is. Or any other fees anybody else would have.
Like this article.
And then the new authority will have the government city of police, county, county manager, with designated. Park City Manager, designated, and then we will be appointing to city commission, to county. Griffin Spalding County will still have a new authority.
So if, if the city manager is, or is the city manager, our city manager designated?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so it don't necessarily mean a city manager.
Right.
I consider county manager.
Yes, ma'am.
You changed it, county manager.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Don't do that then.
Are there any other questions? We have Commissioner Tinsley with a motion.
Thank you, Robert.
Murray with a second. All in favor of the regulation, please signal by raising your hand. Seventeen. Item eighteen is creature brand right to appoint members planning a billion lords, district board, build an expired term of instruction to God, expiring twelve thirty-one. Abdul, he has to move. Thank you. Item nineteen is considered authorizing travel for Commissioner Tinsley and Ward with the community range spring training in Long Hill, Georgia, Wednesday, April tenth, twenty twenty-four through Friday, April twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Murray with a motion. Second by Commissioner Ward. All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. And that's our agenda tonight. City manager.
All right, first, a big congratulations to Lamar. I agree with Mayor. He is always out and about uh, downtown and I love seeing him. He's always smiling, always waving, making sure I know that he's there. So I appreciate that from him. Um, and also a big thank you to the linemen. I had spent a lot of time with them this time last year and I haven't seen them near as much, which is actually a good thing. Um, but they are a great group and we're very, very lucky to have them. Um, city ambassadors, if you don't remember, that is one of our goals for the year to establish that group because what we realize is the city needs a consistent brand and we have one. We just don't put it out there very well. And so the group that you saw tonight is a representative of almost anybody that has customer contact. So you see Ms. Bennett for our business perspectives. See Ms. Brock for court, Ms. Robinson for Main Street Economic Development. So there's a lot of people on that list because they are the ones that have contact with our customers and it's studs with solid waste. Um, so I think that that's very important that they are all now working together as a group to make sure that our brand is consistent and we can really sort of represent who we are as a city. Um, so thank, thank you all for being here tonight to do that for us. Um, also, we have been requested by the S seventy-five coalition, corridor coalition to send a letter of support for some congressionally directed spending uh, from Senator Ossoff. And I just need to make sure that y'all are good with me sending that. Mayor sits on that board and has asked that we do that. So everybody is okay with that. I would like that. Yes, okay, thank you.
Send it us on. Sending us some, um, um. What is it? Make the pot water.
Renine.
Tell them, just ask them to reciprocate.
Okay, got it. Um, and then lastly, just so you all know, I'm a little bit unavailable because we have started budget meetings. So they started yesterday afternoon and we have sat through most of those all day today. Um, as you are familiar, if you've been around for a while, I, I get a little bit um, bogged down in that for the next couple of weeks. So Ms. Manning, Gilbert and Ms. Thompson and I have been meeting with people all day today and we'll do so for the rest of this week and next week. So if I don't answer your call, send me a text or I'll call you as soon as we have a break. Um, and then we'll be ready to present that to y'all at our May workshop. It is so far going well, but a lot of interesting new stuff um, lately. And then also um, Ms. Trammell sent you an email uh, about some of the uniform stuff for you all. So if you will please let her know, we've heard back from a few of you, um, what it is that you may need for your Griffin logo. Um, apparel, we will make sure that we get that ordered for you. And that is it for me.
I have nothing.
Thank you for coming and so good to see you, Mr. Griffin and uh, many of us. Often, I'm very, I'm just glad to hear that you're on this whole staff. You've done an amazing job, no further comment.
Mr. Tinsley, nothing to add? And a reminder, um, district meetings next month, April fifteenth, if you haven't reserved for that. Um, writing were mentioned for night, we are having another campaign to send our office office to do. Cap down the regulations that prepare. All of us, we should have had a nice. That effort. And then on the twenty-third, we will be discussing a big one, George Chau, three lot of comp work. That being said, we will motion. Commissioner Ward with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray, all in favor, please. Thank y'all.